For the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item with action would be under public input. We have a number of people who have signed up for the, under the JPA, and I will allow you to speak at the time we're going to have the JPA on the agenda. The only person who signed up for something else was George Dorn for Tourism. George, I'll give you your five minutes. And I'll try to warn you when you have about a minute left, if it takes that long.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors, staff, and citizens. My name is George Julian Dorn. I'm here tonight representing Silver City Arts and Cultural District. I would like to thank the Town Council and the Rogers Tax Board for entrusting us with Rogers Tax dollars to market on behalf of the town. We will, as we have in the past, honor that and steward it and work to the best of our abilities to represent our community in the advertising, marketing, and in the public outreach that we do. I also want to take to heart lots of echo this evening. I want you to know that we took to heart the Rogers Tax Board made comments asking us to be receptive to public input as well as to work with greater transparency. To that end, we're responding immediately. I'd like to invite everyone here, and council and staff in particular, to a Tourism Town Hall. There are flyers over on the table. It's this Monday, June 29th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Western New Mexico University Global Resource Center Auditorium. We invite you to come and share your ideas. It's a tourism discussion and an exchange. We'll be discussing how Silver City being advertised, why the tourists come to Silver City, where does the advertising funding come from, how are each of us involved in tourism, and what does our future look like? So I invite all of you to attend that. I look forward to seeing you there. If you'd like any more information, you can reach out to Silver City Arts and Cultural District, 201 North Hudson, at the Visitor Center. Also, you can reach us at info@silvercitytourism.org or silvercitytourism.org website. And I look forward to engaging with all of you. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council comments. Councilor Kano?
Mr. Mayor. The first thing I have is that the code enforcement officers have reached out to me to let everyone in District 4 know that it is our turn to be checked for weeds and junk and other sort of nuisances in our yards. So if you are one of those people that has been putting off cutting the weeds, now's the time to do it. The code enforcement will be going around and they will be leaving notices and citing when necessary, so you've been warned. And then the second thing is, it was District 4 that experienced the shooting on Sunday evening. And I know that there have been lots of questions and concerns and there are a lot of people that are worried about safety, but it appears that it was a very isolated incident. It was directed at, you know, a certain group of people, and it's not something that should be repeating itself hopefully. So District 4 is still safe. That neighborhood is still safe. I believe that 100%, and so do residents that have been living there for 60 years. So, you know, just keep an eye on your surroundings and then you'll be okay. I'd also like to ask people to send their good thoughts and their prayers to the victims of that shooting that are recovering. There's one in particular who, their family is already starting to raise money because they're going to be going through a lot of treatments. So if anyone's interested in more information on that, you can send me an email. It's also on Facebook. Everybody's got it on their Facebook right now, so you can find the link to that GoFundMe site. And I would also like to thank the off-duty Santa Claus Police Officer who responded because, you know, police officers, even though they're off-duty, they never stop protecting and serving, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Denver Silver City officials for putting on some pictures signed down Cooper Street. It was sorely needed, and I think it's a little bit better now. Another thing is that there was a letter that was sent to one of us, or to all of us, from the council about the bikers doing festivities with a Blues Festival. This Blues Festival, for many years now, it has been Blues and bikes. And for another reason, they don't make bikers, that's fine. That's fine, but it's a pretty diverse situation. We don't reg out on the other bikers, the Tour de Hida, so let's not reg on the biker from the Blues Festival. Now, another thing is that there's going to be a bunch of us here, and we're going to raise money and food for the gospel mission, and it's called a Local Bikers Ride for the Gospel Mission. And it will be sponsored by some of us bikers, Rio Number, America Chapter 358, the Marine Corps League, the Amaduras Law Motorcycle Club, and the Silver High Class of 1980. All the proceeds, we're going to charge $5 a biker and $10 a car, though. And all the proceeds are going to go to a gospel mission, plus the four cans of food. So the public is invited to attend, and we're going to have festivities at Goff Park. Thank you.
Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's hard times in Silver City. Back of my neck getting hot and gritty. Today's week, let's be mindful, let's be careful with each other out there. I noticed on the traffic on Broadway that people, I think, are speeding up and getting a little more ferocious, maybe because they're hot and uncomfortable. So I just want to acknowledge the police force that I know, I saw stop two vehicles on Broadway for speeding. Please keep that up. Please slow down if you're a citizen. And one more thing, I really want to thank all of the people who this week have contacted me and talked with me about things that they love and the things they're concerned about with Silver City. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Badison?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was also contacted by code enforcement to say District 1 is also on their radar this week. So they are apparently already out, and if you hear this and you have weeds, go out and weed and pick up trash and things like that, because as Councilor Kano had already mentioned, they will be citing. They will give you an opportunity to clean. So just be aware, District 1, they're out on patrol, and it is weedy out there, as well as hot. So the weeds are drying up and, you know, will pose a potential fire hazard. So I think the other thing I'd like to say is, I want to thank everyone who's contacted me about items on the agenda this evening. I appreciate it. I want folks to understand some really important things. A, not every resolution or ordinance passes. B, when a resolution or an ordinance is placed on the agenda, it provides the council with the opportunity to discuss items that are of critical importance to our residents. So I just, I've mentioned to folks that they needed to read two of the resolutions in tandem, and just in the future, rather than just look at the, if you're one of those folks that may not have an opportunity to go in to the website to look at what's being proposed, just reading the agenda may not give you a complete picture of what might be going on. So just remember that there's a reason why we put things on the agenda. It's so that we can discuss things that are of critical importance to the residents and that may have an impact in what we're discussing on someone else or some other entity. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think I have plenty to hear and say throughout this agenda, speaking agenda, so I'm not going to have any comments at this point. Does anybody need round two? Moving on, approval of minutes. Councilor Emmensmith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of a regular council meeting of June 9th, 2015. Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Badison?
I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting June 9th, 2015. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Mr. Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilor. I'll keep this very brief. The, I wanted to point out, and I hope you get a chance to go by and look at the park at 32nd and Silver Street. Gary Staley and a group of young people from his church did some amazing work on the park this last week, and really cleaned it up and cleared out a lot of the dead dying brush and invasive plants. And I was out there this morning, and I actually looked at it before, and it really, really looks nice. So a big thank you to the LDS and their community project. Along with Councilor Kano and Councilor Badison's comment, we are ordering more door hangers for code enforcement. So as they come to your house, they will leave you a door hanger and let you know that you're on their radar. And also I think it's important as we look around the community to recognize what's really looking good. The parks, I'm at Goff Park every day, and all of the parks around town, thanks to Peter and Jesus and his crews, are really, really looking nice. And I was also out at the cemetery the other day, and it also looks very, very clean. And I think that that crew deserves a big thanks. It's a pretty monumental task to keep up with, trying to grow grass here and kill weeds here. And, Peter, do you have anything? Work the chief.
Next item on the agenda, under new business. See, I'm already going to be speaking a lot. Approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-14 authorizing the execution and delivery of a First Amendment to the Colonius Infrastructure Project Fund Grant Agreement by and among the Town of Silver City as grantee and the New Mexico Colonius Infrastructure Board and the New Mexico Finance Authority as grantors. Amending the scope of the project financed by the Colonius Infrastructure Project Fund Grant Agreement to include construction of Phase 2 street and drainage improvements on Silver Street from Pine Street to 20th Street, approving the form and terms of the other details concerning the First Amendment to Colonius Infrastructure Project Fund Grant Agreement, amending Resolution Number 2014-33 to conform to the provisions of this resolution, ratifying actions heretofore taken, repealing all action inconsistent with this resolution, and authorizing the taking of other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the First Amendment to Colonius Infrastructure Project Fund Grant Agreement. First Amendment. Mayor, Peter, thanks for that.
That's really a long. It's actually very simple and pretty short. In March, we were, we had a bid out, and we awarded a project for Silver Street, and our basic project area was from Pine to Vam Street. The bids came in really good on that project. Actually, we had about $160,000 left over on the project, so what we did is we went back to the Finance Authority Board, and what we requested was that we not change the scope of the project, but we changed the project area. What we wanted to do is we wanted to add another block of that, onto that project, so we could use the remainder of that $160,000 to further get, a little further down on Silver Street than we would if we'd have to revert that money back. So we did go in front of the board. It was approved. What this is, is this is all the paperwork that goes along with that. And the project is basically the same as, the scope is still the same. We're doing new paving, curb and gutter, sidewalk striping signage.
Councilor Badison?
So, if I remember correctly, we were awarded money for Phase 2, but if we had completed Phase 2 and Phase 3 engineering, and so that's what that extra block is, is moving into Phase 3. So that would leave two blocks left, or do we have an agreement?
We actually, I'm not sure if Alex also let you know that we were awarded money for Phase 3 also, but we won't be getting the rest of that money till October 2016 from the NMDOT. So this will get us to almost 20th Street, and then we, next year, we will have the remainder of the funds to get all the way to Silver Heights.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Councilor Kano?
Mr. Mayor. This time I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-14 authorizing the execution and delivery of a First Amendment to the Colonius Infrastructure Project Fund Grant Agreement by and among the Town of Silver City as grantee and the New Mexico Colonius Infrastructure Board and the New Mexico Finance Authority as grantors. Amending the scope of the project financed by the Colonius Infrastructure Project Fund Grant Agreement to include construction of Phase 2 street and drainage improvements on Silver Street from Pine Street to 20th Street, approving the form and terms of and other details concerning the First Amendment to Colonius Infrastructure Project Fund Grant Agreement, amending Resolution Number 2014-33 to conform to the provisions of this resolution, ratifying actions heretofore taken, repealing all action inconsistent with this resolution, and authorizing the taking of other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the First Amendment to the Colonius Infrastructure Project Fund Grant Agreement. First Amendment.
Councilor Ray?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second as read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
Any further questions? We have a motion and a second as read into the record. Roll call.
Councilor Kano? Aye. Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Emmensmith?
Aye. Councilor Badison?
Aye.
It's going along swimmingly. Next item on the agenda, approval/disapproval of bid number 14/15-6, 2014 CDBG street improvements. Peter, you're still up.
On May 28th, we opened bids, and we had two bids. Actually, these were probably the best two bids in all the years that I've been here. They were about $900 difference. The low bidder was Demmon Excavation, and he came in at $432,785.50. So that was the low bid. We did have all their paperwork, everything checked out by our engineers. They did meet all specifications. It is staff's recommendation that we award this bid to Demmon Excavation. We do have the money. It is part of the CDBG grant that we were awarded in 2014. We will have a little bit of money extra for contingency. We'll have about $30,000. But we do have enough area that we will be able to put every penny we can into that project. There is, the project area is, there's basically four streets. What we have is Arizona from San Vicente to Garcia, Chihuahua from Arizona to Cooper, Hilo from Arizona to the Dead End, which is just right below Cooper Street, and then Sonora Street. We have two blocks on Sonora that we left off, off the 2012 project. We will be doing paving, restoration of curb and gutter, drive pads, AD8 ramps where possible, and a little bit of sidewalk work. We can't put sidewalk, there's some areas that we can't because a lot of the homes are built right up to the back of the curb, but where there's areas that we can, we will be putting sidewalks.
Councilor Emmensmith?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Penney, when will the work start?
Roughly in about a month. In the next two weeks, we'll have our pre-construction meeting, and then hopefully we'll, in about two weeks after that, we can get construction started. It's a 90-day construction period, so we should have the project completed in about 90 days.
Councilor Badison?
Mr. Penney, can you explain about the fact that the other bidder does qualify as a resident business, but because it's federal funds, we can't use, we can't apply the 5%?
Right. We do have that 5% preference, the town does, but when it comes to federal funding, basically none of those things apply. Basically, federal funding tells you that everything is just, is equal to everybody, and everybody's on the same terms. There's no 5% differences for disability or for small business, or there's a few of them. But when it comes to federal funding, it's just based on lowest bidder and as long as they meet all your specifications.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of bid number 14/15/6, 2014 CDBG street improvements by staff recommendation to Demmon Excavation, Inc., in a total amount of $432,785.50 without the GRP.
May I second that motion as stated?
We have a motion and a second as read into the record. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second as read into the record. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-16, Policies Governing Public Input at Regular Meetings of the Town Council of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico. This is a resolution that I'm sponsoring. After reading the old resolution, I found in my opinion that it was pretty prohibitive and did not leave a lot of discretion to the mayor to allow for fruitful public input. And public input is extremely vital, and even though many of you who have been here in front of this council before know that we don't engage the public in public input because it's not a, it wasn't put on the agenda, specific topics weren't put on the agenda, so we have to be very careful in debate and discussion. It still gives us very important information from the public that we may not know. It also expresses the will of the people that we're trying to serve, and it's extremely important that we do hear from people. The old one was prohibitive in that it truly only allowed for 20 minutes of public input, meaning if just a handful of people with their five minutes could dominate a meeting, and if they were here and they first come, first served, if they just came to meetings and were the first, they could actually keep a lot of public input from hitting us. And we want, and we don't want that. We want to have more discretion. It was also a little prohibitive in that it actually required that people sign in 30 minutes before, and we weren't ever really following that rule. We've always allowed for people to sign up within five minutes, and we want to put that in this resolution so that people do have, you know, pretty close up to the meeting, an opportunity to sign in and to speak. It also allows the mayor to have a little bit of discretion to help facilitate a much broader public input. So if there's a dozen people signed up for one item, I can, I can help move through that and allow some other topics to be spoken about and maybe guide the public into allowing to kind of get a spokesperson to speak on that very important subject that they want, and that way we just, we can still help mitigate the time that we're here, but try to get the broadest amount of public input that we can because it is so important. And with that, does staff have any other comments on how that this might be useful? Mr. Marshall?
I believe you're cleaning up my mess, and this makes it a much more transparent and friendly process.
Any comment? Councilor Badison?
Mayor, no comment, but a motion. I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-16, Policies Governing Public Input at Regular Meetings of the Town Council of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico.
Councilor Emmens?
I'll second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution Number 2015-16, Policies Governing Public Input at Regular Meetings of the Town Council of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico. Is there any further discussion? Would anybody from the public want to comment on this? We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilor Badison?
Aye. Councilor Emmensmith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Kano?
Aye.
Now for the big one everybody's been waiting for. Mr. Marshall, could you have the door shut? We put, we actually put the microphone out back, just, we actually planned on some overfill. Could we clean that up so that we get a little less echo?
Mayor, I move to short break. That way, Larry and Kano can see some of that maybe and work on that. I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I call this meeting back to order. Very quickly, you know, I just want to apologize. We anticipated a little overflow, so we were trying to rearrange some speakers and everything else to accommodate any overflow if it materialized. Also, I'd like to invite people to fill in any empty chair you see. I think there's, there is a few vacant chairs, so if you would like, just come forward. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-17 authorizing the mayor to enter into a joint powers agreement providing for membership in the New Mexico-Central-Arizona Project cap entity. I sponsored this, but maybe not intuitively, not to the degree that many of you might intuitively think. I'm sponsoring this because of the importance this has for this body and our public and our residents to speak and voice their desires, their wants, and their will. And I wanted this to be done before the county voted because, for all fairness to them, the commissioners need to know what we want. It's our duty to inform them and help them out in their decisions as well. So that's the main focus of why I sponsored this. I will tell you that going in, I'm very hopeful that this council does not approve this, but we will have to see what you want. And with that, I'm going to start this one off with public input, and I will start with, by using the list and allowing those who did sign up, but I'm not going to limit it to this list, if you'd like. I would like to convey to people to try to keep it as short as possible, try not to I would like to convey to people to try to keep it as short as possible, try not to reiterate the same facts, but express your opinions in your way, with your words, and express your desires of us and future governing bodies who maybe need to hear it as well. Dutch Salmon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and--
Is that better?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. I'm Dutch Salmon, I'm a Grant County resident. And unlike some other venues I've attended in recent days, months on this issue, I think the council here already has a pretty good idea about what would make sense for a water future for southwest New Mexico. I think this council and staff understand that we already have very significant water resources, groundwater reserves in the Inverness Basin where Silver City is located, some seventy-four million acre feet, according to one study by the legendary state engineer, Steve Reynolds. We actually have water reserves that exceed withdrawals, recharge, that exceed withdrawals, according to another study by Blue Incorporated, which was hired by the town here a few years ago to assess our water resources. I think you understand that these water resources can be developed much more cheaply, with much less environmental damage than a river diversion project, which is planned by the ISC over along the Upper Box area of the Hela River. And I think this council understands that the ISC has been something of an outlaw on this issue. And while we recognize that, I wouldn't object if you all would help us in getting the recalcitrant reactionary ISC in line here to make use of a sensible water future for southwest New I guess that's about it for me, but I think your path is clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Donna Stevens?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. First, thank you very, very much for fixing the sound. I can hear perfectly now. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm Donna Stevens, the Executive Director of the Upper Hela Watershed Alliance, which is a watershed protection nonprofit with many members who are residents of Silver City, although I actually live outside of the town limits, just for full disclosure there. As you've probably guessed, I'm here to comment on the resolution for the town to sign the Joint Powers Agreement, or JPA, to become part of the New Mexico CAP entity. There are many compelling reasons not to sign the JPA. There are so many unknowns about the diversion project, including the actual water yield, the financial and ecological costs, the identity of the end-water user, and the technical feasibility of the diversion project as currently planned, such as it is. Who's going to pay for this project, which is estimated to cost a billion dollars? The AWSA only provides about a hundred million dollars, leaving a nine-hundred-million-dollar shortfall. The JPA says, quote, "The parties agree that they may provide financial support to the extent they are able to, in each party's individual discretion, as necessary in perpetuity to plan, design, construct, operate, and maintain the New Mexico unit," unquote. The Interstate Stream Commission and the Hela San Francisco Water Commission, after lengthy negotiations, arrived at this language, substituting "may" for "shall," so local municipalities and counties could feel comfortable signing on to the JPA. It seems to me that changing this one word just delays the day of reckoning, when attorneys will have to interpret what "may" means. The ISC attorneys kicked the can down the road by changing "shall" to "may." But the JPA also states, quote, "The parties to the New Mexico CAP entity acknowledge that without local financial support, the construction of a New Mexico unit may not become a reality," unquote. We really can't have it both ways. We're either paying for it, or we're not. And if we're paying for a diversion, it could bankrupt us while providing very little water. Many of the potential parties to the JPA think that they can easily get out of it if it's too risky or too expensive. However, the so-called escape clause isn't really much of an escape. It states, and I quote, "In the event of withdrawal by a party from this agreement, prior determination of this agreement, the withdrawing party shall be obligated to honor all commitments made to the New Mexico CAP entity before the withdrawing party's withdrawal. Moreover, the withdrawing party shall not be entitled to a refund of any amounts paid," unquote. What exactly are these commitments? The JPA doesn't specify. For years, Silver City has wisely advocated for common sense, fiscally responsible, non-diversion alternatives that meet our water demands for decades into the future. I urge you to continue to be a voice of reason, to support non-diversion alternatives, and not to sign the JPA. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. My name is Carol Morrison, and I'm a citizen of the Town of Silver City. And I first want to thank you for setting up the extra accommodations, expecting a large crowd, a larger crowd. I think the reason you don't see so many people here tonight is that we have faith in you. We believe in you, and we have a deep feeling that you will do the right thing. I think it will be different on Thursday morning. I just wanted to say first that I thank you for using good judgment and not participating in the Hela San Francisco Water Commission. I also thank you in advance for using good judgment, and also saving your own time and our dollars by not participating in the JPA. I think personally, I've been watching it for years and been attending meetings. I feel like that Craig Rupke and I, from the ISC, have kind of grown old together. And I think the project right now is just tainted with lots of egos and politics. And I think if this goes through, that the losers are going to be the citizens of this four-county area and the river. So thank you very much for being the counselors you are.
Thank you. And just for, to allow for more presenters and more time, let's keep the applause to a minimum. I appreciate it and understand the motivations to it, but just so that we can have a more full dialogue. Larry McLeod?
Mr. Mayor and counselors, my name is Larry McLeod. I live here in Silver City. I pretty much agree with the earlier speakers, so I won't dwell on that point, but I feel like it's important that I point out the fact that you have a mission statement. And the mission statement basically talks about preserving and protecting a lot of our natural resources. And I feel it's very important, and I think that you need to ask yourselves, why? Why would you want to sign on to this JPA, given the situation and given the impacts that they would include? Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Peter, did you want to speak, or did you want to just be available for any types of questions?
Well, I just wanted to, Mayor and Counselor, say a few words. I am the former director of community development for the town, and I worked on water issues for the last ten years, and a lot on the AWSA. So I just thought if there are any questions about what the town has done or not done, or why, I'd be happy to be available for any of those questions. And then I just wanted to express concern. The JPA represents a potential harm to the town, I believe. The town is well situated for water, for its future needs and its current needs, and as a matter of fact, we help a lot of our neighbors in the county as well. And the JPA commits the town to using water that it does not need at enormous expense, so I urge you not to sign it.
Starbowski?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to talk, and also thank you for that earlier resolution, which shows some sensitivity, the dynamics that have been going on, that need to be approved with the county. Donna Stevens hit the items that I was concerned about regarding that JPA, and I imagine, Mr. Scadron, you read over that agreement, and it really does seem like it binds our community into throwing good money after bad. There is no way out, at least looking at that general language. The one thing I'm going to just pose is kind of a question, if you all discuss it after, that'd be cool. I'd just like to understand something. The county is incorporated, but it's also, not county, the city, but it's also part of Grant County. And so that leads me to two questions. Number one, what kind of dynamics and interaction go on with what the county does as far as obligating city water users, for instance? If the county should go ahead and, you know, sign on to the JPA? That's the first part. And then the second part is a more general question to any of you here, and that is whether you have had an opportunity to have it in conversation with the councils of Lordsburg and Deming, as far as whether they understand what they're getting themselves into. And I'll sit down if those questions are answered, that would be lovely. Thank you.
I think part of those questions will be answered through staff reports, and I believe staff has been working to the best of their ability with the staffs of other municipalities, who generally have not had input in this JPA either. That is all that was listed on the sign-in sheet, but anybody else who wants to speak, come up and state your name, and you're welcome to speak.
Hello, my name is Andy Payne, and I'd just like to say Donna Stevens summed up just about all the most important points of what we're getting into here, if we're not careful. But I think one of the worst things about this proposal is, it's going to use up all the funds that we could be using for really constructive projects right now. So that ten, fifteen years from now, this project's not going to be built, it's got too many flaws, but ten years from now, we'll look back and say, nothing happened during that time, except fighting over, trying to build a project that won't work, and that doesn't have to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Shelby?
I'm Shelby Hallmark, I'm a Silver City resident. I just want to thank the mayor and the council for having this session, and for allowing public input, and for having the staff do the work, which I think is going to result in education for the group that shows up here on Thursday morning. I really thank you for doing that.
Thank you for this additional time. I, too, was over at the school board, so I really do appreciate the fact that you're giving us a little extra time tonight. And I'm, my name is Janet Waller Ortiz, and I don't want to belabor things, but I do know, as a teacher, sometimes repetition is important. So I have a little bit of a statement here, and I may touch upon a couple of things that other folks have already mentioned, but I want to go on record, okay? I'm certain that all of you have had time to read and research about the fatally flawed plans to attempt diversions along the Hela and San Francisco rivers, and the fact that the JPA allows for any means necessary, including new taxes, bonds, user fees, to help pay for such boondoggles. By rejecting the JPA, you will show your support for sanity and rational thinking, and your concern for Grant County citizens by protecting them from inevitable financial issues that these diversion proposals will bring. Instead of diversions, these millions of federal dollars could be put to work right now, right here, in terms of jobs, water conservation projects, municipal water projects, and I'm sure I don't need to go into any more detail. Imagine not having to raise taxes to do all of these projects, because the federal monies would cover them all? Imagine that, or maybe ninety percent. Imagine that, instead of owing nine-hundred million. And again, that's a repetition, but I think that figure needs to be pounded home. It has been proven again and again that any type of diversion on the Hela or San Francisco River is bound to fail, and millions of dollars more will be lost, with no guarantee that there will be any water to divert after all. Damage to the economy, the environment, tourism, sports activities, irreversible. Grant County could literally go bankrupt with this scheme. Is that something you want in your legacy of professional service? And please, you know, the shoe fit, wear it, but I certainly know, I echo what Carol Morrison said, and thanksgiving for these opportunities to allow us to come forward, and sometimes, you know, if we're passionate about it, we need to say some things. We need to be heard also, so we really appreciate that. So do the right thing, stop the insanity now, and vote against the JPA. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
My name is Gary Staley. I'm not a resident of Silver City, I live just outside town limits. I may be the only one in here that would ask you at least to consider it, because my question is, if you don't sign this, will you have any say-so in any future agreements? I don't know the answer to that, so.
Thank you.
I guess I have just one question. This billion-dollar price tag I've heard--
I'm sorry, my name's Tom Manning. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but the billion-dollar price tag that I've heard for this project is the same number I heard before the recent disclosure that they might need to do an additional project on the San Francisco River, and I'm a little confused by that. I think it's a little odd that after ten years of planning, they finally, all of a sudden, decided that the Hela might not yield enough water, and so we might have to have a second diversion on the San Francisco River. And I think that's pretty telling of the whole process, that it took ten years to come to the point to realize that this thing's not going to work. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments? Ma'am?
My name is Poppy Daines. I'm a Silver City resident and also a graduate of O'Learyville High School. I just wanted to mention, just touch on the global, just picturing this more globally really quick, I'm going to try to be brief, but by signing on to this type of project, we're kind of labeling our city as that place that's not progressive. This is not the direction, I'm speaking as the future generation here. This is not the direction, I'm speaking as the future generation here, as a young person. I don't think this is the direction that the world is moving in. So I just think that by signing on to this type of project, we're labeling ourselves as the kind of city that isn't progressive and isn't moving in the same direction as the rest of the world is going to be. Because I truly believe that our generation is not, we're not moving in that direction. So I just wanted to mention that on a more global scale, just for more, take a picture. Thank you.
Is there any other public comments?
My name's Ron Henry. I'm a citizen of Silver City. And I just want to say in two sentences, in different words, what I've already heard, which is my concern is the economic impact and the ecological impact. That's the first sentence. The second sentence is that this agreement is asking us to sign on to, and maybe there's some people in this room that are as old as I am and know this expression, they're asking us to sign on to a pig in a poke.
If there's no other comments, we're going to be moving into probably some lengthy staff discussion. And hopefully that'll answer some of the questions there. I do believe some of those questions might actually become answered with the next resolution, depending on how that all turns out. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Marshall.
Thank, excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm here to present the staff report on the JPA itself as the document. Some of it actually may be repetitive from what you just heard because I prepared this a couple of days ago and we have a very informed audience. The town manager is unable to attend tonight, and I'm actually going to call him so you can listen. But he asked that I read a letter to you, just to let you know that he has reviewed our documents and he is on board with them. Mayor and Council, unfortunately, I am unable to appear at tonight's meeting of the town council. I am attending to important town business in Santa Fe. I wanted, however, to add my voice to the comments to be made tonight by the assistant town manager and town attorney. On the town's behalf, for these past 11 years, my staff and I have been actively educating ourselves as to potential consequences for the town as a result of the passage of the Arizona Water Settlement Act. Our attempts at performing due diligence have required us to ask difficult questions that were often ignored or answered less than candidly. Some have branded the towns, the town as obstructionist or worse, merely because it was, it has endeavored to make intelligent inquiry. I have reviewed the presentations of Mr. Marshall and Mr. Skavren and without equivocation, am fully supportive. Their perspectives and analysis may not be my own. I commend both those gentlemen for their hard work and dedication to the town. Respectfully, Alex Brown, Town Manager. And I provided you all my notes so that you can follow along. And you'll notice at the end of each comment where there's a direct reference to the JPA, I provided the section of the JPA that generated my point. The note prerequisites for membership, that's in the introduction, and, hold on. Sorry, I had to mute him. And that's a very critical point, that a joint powers agreement gives up sovereign rights of an entity. And we're, if we were to sign on to this, not even knowing who the possible partners could be, we could be giving up our sovereign rights to basically, maybe for lack of a better term, a complete stranger. Only needs to be public agency under the JPA laws of the state. That's in the Joint Powers Act. No requirements of financial assets, revenue stream, or expertise in managing complex business enterprises. We have never, in the last 10, 11 years that I've been associated directly with the town, entered into any type of partnership that we can't make sure that the partners are viable and following in the laws of the state of New Mexico and other laws that impact the town. No disclosure requirements regarding past financial audits, litigation, and unresolved claims. I think that's pretty self-explanatory, goes back to doing due diligence on who you give your power over to. The unknown number of prospective JPA members. Each additional member changes the quorum and it dilutes the voting power of other members. So one might say, let's sign on so that we at least have a voice. Well, without knowing that whether three other people sign on are agencies or groups or 23, we don't know what our power and our voice actually is. Since power to commit rests with the majority of a quorum, which may contain empty-pocketed parties who can bind the whole. No protection for large municipalities or counties with assets and population base whose individual vote is no more valuable than the smallest public district. This is also true for the cap entity as it allocates water under Section 10. Unknown cost of New Mexico unit design, construction, maintenance, and repair in perpetuity. There has been no business plan. And that would include all the components that might go into a business plan for such a complex entity. No analysis of present or future customers. No analysis of representations that each member will put the water to beneficial use. The cap entity will be obligated to pay the cost for replacement water, which includes the cost of operations, maintenance, replacement, and delivery of cap water to the Indian community. These costs are unknown, but at present, the value of replacement water is at least $600 an acre foot, which will create a recurrent reimbursement from the cap entity of $6 million for each 10,000 acre feet of water. And there's also another figure that I became aware of, maybe about a third of that. So we go from $6 to $2 million that you have to pay every single year that you divert 10,000 acre feet of water. Unknown sources of repayment. Funding is now limited to Arizona Water Settlement Act allocations. No commitment from Interstate Stream Commission or the state of New Mexico for any additional funding. Any further allocations from federal or state government is subject to appropriation by legislative bodies. I think we're all aware of how well that's progressing through Washington and Santa Fe. No indication that such funding would ever be available. Additional funding for the New Mexico unit is anticipated to come from sales of water, which must be within southwest New Mexico. The joint powers agreement implies that additional funding can come from issuing revenue bonds and assessments against members, some of whom have no financial resources or taxes to be imposed on the inhabitants of the member jurisdictions. The joint powers agreement does not expressly authorize bonding, taxing, or non-due assessment, which is required under the Joint Powers Act. So this is a very, very unique feature in this joint powers agreement that, just looks funny when I look up there, everybody's bird. This joint powers agreement leaves a whole lot of responsibility for the conduct of the entity at the agency level or the party level, where most joint powers agreements, I've never seen one like this. So the others that we've seen, once you create the entity, the entity can stand. This one does not. Obligations of the JPA entity. Execute a New Mexico unit agreement with the Secretary of the Interior containing at least the provisions of Exit 2.48 of the Consumptive Use and Fair Balance Agreement. Commit to design, build, operate, and maintain the New Mexico unit, i.e. the diversion, storage, and transmission construction project in perpetuity. Each member's governing board must formally resolve to commit to the beneficial use of the Arizona Water Settlement Act water. Silver City and municipalities of the mining district provide water to 24,000 of the 29,000 persons in Grant County. Warranties and representations. The signatories warrant and represent that collectively and individually, the constituent parties undertake the planning, designing, construction, operation, and maintenance of the New Mexico unit. So we're going to warrant that our unknown partners have some skill, ability to be an equal partner to us, or at least a contributing partner. We don't even know who they are. That each party is committed to beneficial using the water available to New Mexico at any cost. And as you heard from Mr. Russell, and you look at our 40-year water plan, our 40-year water plan at an extreme growth rate that we have not seen in probably my lifetime, gave us 30 years of our current water rights. The actual wet water is projected to go much longer than that. That each party has the ability to perform all or any combination of the listed duties, including the design, building, operation, and maintenance of the New Mexico unit. Legal ambiguities, contradictions, and misrepresentations. The joint powers agreement contains a paragraph which states that the cap entity shall comply with all provisions of the yet-to-be-drafted New Mexico unit agreement, except as otherwise limited by the joint powers agreement. Since this project is under federal jurisdiction, the New Mexico unit agreement is a federal contract, which will supersede any limitations in the joint powers agreement. The joint powers agreement limitations probably won't stand. I also find it interesting that we would enter into another, into this agreement or the New Mexico unit agreement, knowing that they may contradict each other, and then we're going to pick the really subordinate agreement as the lead. I don't believe that the federal government will ever allow that. Notwithstanding the warranties and representations, the JPA members reserve discretion not to fund the project and the uses of water to which they have committed, recognizing explicitly that failure of local financial support, the New Mexico unit may not become a reality. So the reserve discretion to refuse local financial support contradicts and violates the commitments made regarding the project and the beneficial use of the water. So a little bit of a disagreement with one of the speakers was the commitments aren't stated. They may not be stated in whole. They are stated. We are committing by signing the joint powers agreement to the design, build, construct, maintain, and use of the water forever. So we're going to get to the section where you withdraw. You already made all the possible commitments you could withdraw, and then you get to the section that says you can leave, but you can't take your commitments you already made. So basically, you can give up your vote. The joint powers section 10D states that a withdrawing party prior to termination shall be obligated to honor all commitments made to the New Mexico cap entity before withdrawing, as I just said. Those commitments, as described in the joint powers agreement, include the obligation to plan, design, construct, operate, and maintain the New Mexico unit, and to beneficially use the water obtained to the Arizona Water Settlement Act. So there really is no way to withdraw. The effective date of the JPA, and this is really just a misrepresentation and an ambiguity because it does exist, but the effective date of the joint powers agreement is said to occur in Section 12, once it has been executed by the signatories for all the parties here, too. So without knowing who are to be the signatories, how do you know when the signup period has expired? And thus, when the agreement becomes effective? So on the website of the Interstate Stream Commission, it states July 3, 2015. In the resolution that was passed by the Interstate Stream Commission, there is no date. And this is the resolution that approved the joint powers agreement to be sent to The financial issues. All monies from our sources shall be used exclusively for planning, designing, construction, operation, and maintenance. No money is authorized to fund administration and legal defense. Interstate Stream Commission and state of New Mexico explicitly state that they shall not be obligated to provide any funding outside of what is allocated by the federal government and the Arizona Water Settlement Act. All subsequent financial burden remains on the cap entity and its constituent members, which include the taxpayers thereunder. So the question about the county, real quick, is the, when the county imposes taxes, that burdens the residents of the town of Silver City, because we are a member of, we live in their county. The issue with the monies and exclusive use without a legal or administrative, that can depend on how contracts are issued. You can issue a contract that would be basically a deliverable contract, which would, whatever it takes for you to do something, and then you use the rest for administration. We don't know how they issue their contracts. The cap entity is not authorized under this joint powers agreement to issue bonds or to tax. Such specific authorization is required under the New Mexico Joint Powers Act. Thus, it will fall to the member party to tax or issue bonds for use in the New Mexico unit project. So once again, you might have a partner, several partners, more partners than you can count, that have no authority, no capacity to issue a tax or a bond. The Interstate Stream Commission retains complete budget and expenditure control, including the authority to deny reimbursement. Warranties of financing by joint powers agreement members are contradicted by the local discretion to withhold funding clause. And I think it's really, really important, there's a word in the, I believe it's Section V R, that, it's really typed and I can't read it. Including the authority to deny reimbursement, there's a section there that allows them to deny reimbursement at their discretion. So they may not like the email that you sent with your reimbursement, or the color of paper it was submitted on, or the font you used. And they have the discretion to deny reimbursement. Once they deny reimbursement, because there's the, Interstate Stream Commission is the primary fiscal agent, the, a member of the joint powers agreement becomes a secondary fiscal agent and manages what is called the second fund. The Interstate Stream Commission has to approve the budgets and expenditures out of both funds. So that creates an interesting circle of debt that's floating out there that nobody can pay, the entity cannot pay, because the Interstate Stream Commission denied the request, which means the signatories are the only ones that are left to pay the bill. And they can't pay the entity, because once they pay the entity, the IAC gets control of the money again. So they would have to write a check separately to an engineer or bulldozer operator to actually get the bill paid. So that's kind of an interesting circle that they run you around in. The legal protections. Each party is responsible for its own negligence, limited to the caps imposed by the New Mexico Tort Claims Act. However, the most likely source of litigation will not be in tort, but in contract, which is not covered by the Tort Claims Act, or in insurance through state or municipal risk management. So they give you some protections for a tort claim, and most of the issues that, in all the scenarios that we've run, are going to be contractually based, which are not covered under tort. I did provide you some at the very end, the definition of beneficial use of water. And this is the state engineer's definition, the use of water. and this is the state engineer's definition, "The use of water by man for any purpose which benefits are derived such as domestic, municipal irrigation, livestock, industrial, power development, and recreation." Under the New Mexico Constitution, beneficial use is the basis, the measure and the limit of the rights to use water, therefore, beneficial use of public water diverted or impounded by man-made works is an essential element in the development of a water right. And then if you go back to the consumptive use agreement, it basically removes anything where you're not consuming the water. It's a consumptive agreement, so you have to consume it, which eliminates recreation. With that, I would like to strongly recommend that after many, many hours of research, reading, consulting, that this body reject this resolution, and that the town not be burdened with being a member of this somewhat unknown party.
Mayor and council, normally I give my legal advice to you without written notes in front of me. Tonight, I take a different approach to the presentation of my counsel. The matter before you is of such significance that I have taken the unusual step of drafting my comments beforehand. Mr. Marshall presented to you his and the town manager's analysis of the JPA creating the cap entity. I completely agree with them that the JPA before you is a fatally flawed document. More than that, I believe that any public entity that signs onto it opens itself up to uncalculated risks and costs with only a remote prospect of gain. I would first mention the quorum issues that Mr. Marshall described. The JPA does not limit the number of memberships available, nor provide for any qualifications of membership other than being a public agency. Thus, there may be entities with no financial resources or expertise to contribute, yet their vote is equal to a deep-pocket entity with far more ability and economic resources. A combination of those empty-pocketed members can, as a majority of the quorum, bind the whole to substantial economic commitments. Further, that group may well end up in charge of making allocations of water to member users, an area ripe for favoritism and controversy. Signing a document that doesn't identify your potential partners, nor place any prerequisites on the quality of such partners, is ill-advised. The JPA is requiring the cap entity to enter into an undrafted New Mexico unit contract with the federal government for a large and complex design, construct, operate, and maintenance contract. When entering such a contract, understanding how it's going to be paid for is vital, especially when the obligations are described as perpetual. We note that both the ISC and the state of New Mexico have no financial obligations regarding the New Mexico unit project beyond what is provided by the federal government. The JPA doesn't authorize the cap entity to issue bonds or the power to tax. Yet, there is no business plan or due diligence which would allow the prospective signatories to the JPA to foresee whether the federal allocations will be sufficient to permit the project. The town has been asking the ISC for such business plans since 2004 to no avail. Starting a business without adequate financial resources, projected costs, and a market analysis is a recipe for disaster. So when the federal money runs out, where is the money to come from? It won't be from the state or the ISC. It won't be from the federal government, which specifically advises the parties as to the limits of its contributions. And in the absence of any identifiable customer base, it will not be from revenues. The remaining source would be contributions from the members of the JPA group, and in reality, only those that have deep pockets and a tax base. Now, there are some parties who believe that they will be protected from liability by putting language into the JPA purporting to give discretion to the JPA member as to funding. The signatory is told that it needs to fund only to the extent that it deems appropriate. It gives the illusion of no potential of local liability. I disagree. The signatories to this JPA are warranting to the ISC, to each other, and to the federal government that they have individually, as well as collectively, the ability to design, construct, operate, maintain, and repair the New Mexico unit project. Warranting means a promise that can be enforced. Ability means more than the ability to contract with a third party. It applies the economic ability to accomplish the duties. Further, the proposed New Mexico unit contract will have provisions requiring the cap entity to fully indemnify the federal government for any claims made against either party. You can't make a warranty that you can and will do everything that you commit to, then add a provision that says that in one zone discretion, you don't have to pay for it. You can't promise to indemnify the federal government and then say there's discretion not to perform. In law, it's called contracting in bad faith. Recall that in New Mexico statutes, it is a crime to write a check when you don't have, when you have insufficient funds to cover the check, or know that you won't have the funds when the check clears. The specific risk of potential, of the potential of unlimited indemnity opens the opportunity for huge liability. Moreover, offering such unlimited indemnity is illegal for a county or municipality to offer, and is likewise probably illegal for the cap entity as well. So what is likely to happen when the federal government demands reimbursement for payments made to the Hila Indian community for exchange water? Or a contractor demands payment for services rendered, or makes a claim for indemnity? What happens when the contractor remains unpaid? What happens when the sheriff shows up with a writ of execution for a court judgment against the entity? And the chair of the cap entity turns up his palms to the sky and says, "Sorry, we have no money." Since the cap entity has no powers under the JPA to issue bonds, borrow money, or make assessments, the chair presumably would call on the wealthiest of the members and ask for contribution, to which the municipality or county would respond by asserting that it has the discretion of not funding the cap entity, as per Section 3F of the JPA. So the cap entity is insolvent. But is that the end of the game for the federal government, the contractor, or the judgment creditor? I think not. The creditor will go to court and name the individual members of the cap entity as the defendants. The member will defend, relying on the same "we've got discretion not to pay" provision, except that a court will likely consider certain factors beyond the JPA language, including the initial misrepresentations of the cap entity members, who warranted and promised individually and collectively that each had the economic ability and expertise to perform under the contract in perpetuity. In sympathy to the creditor and in the interest of justice, the court will have the prerogative to decide for itself as to what extent the county or municipality is able to contribute. After all, the JPA gives guidance to the court of what financial resources are available to the county or municipality, including the issuance of bonds, the levy of taxes, and assessments. This possibility is not remote, but likely if the project runs into economic difficulty, especially in the case of a creditor extending goods and services in good faith to an entity that has misrepresented so many material facts, or a federal government that is being denied its indemnity. There exists another illusory promise of the cap entity's signatories, who promise that they shall put the water to beneficial use. If Grant County signs onto the JPA, it will be representing that it will be a beneficial user of the water. In the last hundred years, the county has not invested a dime in water wells, distribution systems, or water rights. And with Silver City and the mining district municipalities providing water to about 24,000 of the 29,000 people in the county, where is their customer base to justify such beneficial use? So the promise by our county to put the water to beneficial use is another material misrepresentation, making this agreement even more distasteful. I suggest that this council accept the work of Mr. Marshall, the town manager, and his staff as being the town's due diligence. In my opinion, the JPA is filled with misrepresentations regarding the ability to pay, to put the water to beneficial use, and to have the broad abilities to accomplish all the undertakings. In contract law, a court will set aside a contract where one side has misrepresented material facts. When a misrepresentation is deliberate with an intent to induce another to contract, the matter moves from contract law to fraud, and at its most extreme, criminal fraud. For the local public official that knowingly and deliberately enters into an agreement that he or she knows to contain deliberate misrepresentations, it is, in my opinion, conduct that may be considered official malfeasance. Accordingly, as town attorney, I most strongly advise this council to refrain from entering this JPA.
Thank you, Mr. Scavron. Now with that, we do need to, we need to decide. Now, as difficult as it would be to move in the affirmative, I strongly encourage and suggest that someone from this council make a motion in the affirmative, so that we fully and completely understand what we're voting on and the consequences of our vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Evansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-17, authorizing the mayor to enter into a joint powers agreement, providing for membership in the New Mexico-Central-Arizona Project cap entity.
Counselor Edison.
Mr. Mayor, I accept that the motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution Number 2015-17, authorizing the mayor to enter into a joint powers agreement, providing for membership in the New Mexico-Central-Arizona Project cap entity. Just as a clarification, a vote yes is approving this JPA, a vote no is disapproving this entity. Is there any further discussion? There is a motion and a second for approval of Resolution Number 2015-17, authorizing the mayor to enter into a joint powers agreement, providing for membership in the New Mexico-Central-Arizona Project cap entity. Roll call.
Counselor Aiden Smith. Counselor Edison.
Nay.
Counselor Ray.
Nay.
Counselor Conno.
Nay.
Counselor Edison.
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short break.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, Congress.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in recess. I call this meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-18, directing the town manager to confer and negotiate with the Interstate Stream Commission and other potential parties to the Joint Powers Agreement dated June 10, 2015, creating a New Mexico-Central-Arizona Project cap entity. I'm also sponsoring this. This is a little, a little more philosophical, a little bit more open-ended, but what we're looking at is the JPA that just died in our council meeting. You know, that was pretty much discussed, negotiated by people who, for the most part, are not elected officials, do not have money, are not staffs, educated staffs of various stakeholders, like the municipalities within the four counties. And I think that was evidenced by the product that came out of it. What we're looking for, because we did find some concerns, you know, there's concerns if the county joins a JPA, whether it's this one, or the one that we just declined, or a future one that is professionally drafted, we, as a, as a community, as a town, even if we are to disapprove a future JPA, we're still going to be embodied into something that the county may join, because we're residents of the county. So what we want to ensure is that there is strong staff negotiating a deal. This, this resolution also says that even though we would be looking to have that professional staff coming up with an actually, a legal document, in my opinion, it still must, by this resolution, come to the council for approval. And we have no clue whether that would be the case or not. So I just want to give my two cents, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Marshall to discuss it in a, probably in a more articulate way.
Well, you just set the bar high. I've only got about four pages to read on this one. Just kidding. If you look at my presentation, it was very much directed at the Joint Powers Agreement and the flaws within that agreement, and the town manager's statement about doing the due diligence on projects, to destroy basically the document that was presented to us on technical issues and what could have been some alternative intention there, and then to not come back and say, "We are willing to sit at the table and talk to you, and come up with, or at least work towards, what we would like," is, in my opinion, would not be a very good sign of the town of Silver City. So I think it, I think it would be hard to overcome. I think the, the purpose of a joint powers agreement is specifically to create the New Mexico cap entity, which explicitly states in the COFA and some other documents that it is to divert water. I also think it's very, very important to recognize that the 2016 work plan for the Interstate Stream Commission on this topic was, one of the items is to bring this project to a 30% engineering. So we're not even at 30% engineering. It is quite inappropriate at that point to make these inescapable commitments forever on the town, and without giving it a chance to actually be engineered and developed. So I think it's good business, and I would support the approval of Resolution 2015-18.
Would you have anything to add to that, Mr. Scavron?
Just a couple of points. Mr. Brown would have the discretion to talk about all alternatives. And it might be that a joint powers agreement to divert would not be what the group decides to do. And it would be important for Silver City to have representation and to give its resources to the group for the benefit of the region. In the 15 years I've been sitting here, I've watched year after year Silver City extending its hand to its neighbors, whether it be the county or the region. I think that it is important that we continue to do that. And again, with the discretion that Mr. Brown has, he can't enter into a commitment, he can only bring back the results of his conversations to you. And it could be to do a different kind of a JPA. And it could be to do a different kind of a JPA, or it could be that the group has decided after due diligence that maybe a JPA with the ISC is not the best way to go for southwest New Mexico. So, I think that this resolution is important to be passed, to give the town manager that direction. So, I encourage you to vote yea for it. Now, one other point is that Laurie Ford has advised me that the record of this council meeting, which I found to be very informative, will be available tomorrow. So, if there's members of the public or of certain county governments might want to see what the conversation was tonight, there will be CDs available or DVDs available tomorrow afternoon, and they should see Laurie at Katz. That's all I have. Thank you.
Is there any questions for Mr. Marshall or Mr. Scavron? Would the public like to comment on this?
Eric Burrow. A quick question about this issue of the public record. The analyses presented tonight were, I found, excellent, well thought out, very well considered and presented, and I wonder if they'll be available to the public in a written form, not just on a CD or DVD?
That's an enormous amount of work, but I have provided copies of my presentation to the press. Putting it online, I think that the press will do a good job of expressing what's going on. And again, the CD of the meeting, James' presentation and mine together, probably came to 15 minutes. If somebody can't spend 15 minutes watching it, then they can't be that interesting.
Mr. Marshall? Would yours be available in written form?
Both of our documents are public records.
That's what I assumed.
Correct. According to the Inspection of Public Records Act, you may request...
I just wasn't sure if it actually was a written document to begin with.
It is a written document.
Thank you very much.
I did add that a little bit around this, but...
We wouldn't hold you to that. Thank you very much, Mayor. Counsel. Would anybody else in the public want to comment on this JPA? I mean, resolution, sorry, I got JPA in my brain, resolution. Counselor Madison.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-18, directing the town manager to confer and negotiate with Interstate Stream Commission and other potential parties to the joint powers agreement dated June 10, 2015, creating a New Mexico-Central-Arizona Project cap entity.
Counselor Evans Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution Number 2015-18, directing the town manager to confer and negotiate with the Interstate Stream Commission and other potential parties to the joint powers agreement dated June 10, 2015, creating a New Mexico-Central-Arizona Project cap entity. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's well-known, and it's already been mentioned by Mr. Brown in his written statement that was read by the assistant town manager, Mr. Marshall, that, you know, the town has been working on this for 10 years. And I think approving this resolution will, I mean, by council action, actually gives him a little bit more, I shouldn't have said quiet, a little bit more ability to, well, I'm trying to think of the right word, and I can't think of it, but, you know, it kind of gives him more cachet to be able to say, you know, "The council supports me, and this is really something that the council has directed me to do. They want me to do this. So, I really do want you to talk to me." You know, I mean, I think it's just a little bit more backing, because I think it's not that we haven't done it in the past, it's just that it's been understood that that's his role as manager, and I think that this just gives him that little extra added oomph to hopefully encourage the ISC and other parties to speak with him. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second as read into the record. Roll call.
Counselor Madison.
Aye.
Counselor Amy Smith.
Aye.
Counselor Ray.
Aye.
Counselor Connaught.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of endorsing Counselor Madison's candidacy for the position of Director-at-Large of the New Mexico Municipal League Board of Directors. Counselor Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. I seek endorsement of the council for what would be, if I'm elected, my third two-year term as Director-at-Large for the New Mexico Municipal Board of Directors. In the past four years, I think I've mainly represented not only the town of Silver City, which is a unique position, but small and large municipalities alike in the Director-at-Large position. I've been appointed to a number of committees, including the Certification Committee, the Budget Committee for the past two years, and the TECs Task Force, which apparently will be restarted. So, I also have been a member of the Community Economic Development, Governmental Operations, and Human Resources Policy Committee, and was recently appointed as the board liaison for this year. And I've also been a Resolutions Committee member since 2009. So, I ask for your endorsement. I would hope that I will be re-elected by the municipalities at the upcoming annual meeting, because I think that it's critical for Silver City to voice its concerns. We're in that unique position of being small, yet 315 more than small. And I think that that's a, it's true. It makes us, it gives us the opportunity to be able to understand both sides, and that's it. I seek your endorsement.
And very quickly, you know, over the years, Counselor Madison has represented us very, very well, and she's respected at the league level. She does, you know, not only is she known up there, she knows the players, and has talked favorably for our city and represented us extremely well. We also have the dilemma of being from the south, which is oftentimes disregarded at the state level. We are in this weird size category where those communities under 10,000 can really wreak havoc on the body of law that affects us, as well as those large entities, especially those in the northern part of the state. So, I think it behooves us to support somebody from our community, to help out and further our agenda and to take care of us, and if nothing else, just stay aware of what's going on at the state level and giving us that insight that she always has. And so, I'd be very happy if the council had endorsed her. Is there any other questions or comments? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of endorsing Counselor Madison's candidacy for a position of Director-at-Large of the New Mexico Municipal League Board of Directors.
Counselor Evans Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second for approval of endorsing Counselor Madison's candidacy for the position of Director-at-Large of the New Mexico Municipal League Board of Directors. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Madison.
I thank the council for its support and for the endorsement. I'm very appreciative of everyone I serve with, and many of them have made connections beyond what I have made at the Municipal League, and it's just greatly appreciated to have their support. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is appointment to the library board, or appointments. There are two vacancies on the library board, one of which is the current chair, Ted Lim, and the other applicant is Michael Dowd to fill those positions. Speaking with the chair, of course, he recommends himself, and he's good with having Michael Dowd on there as well. I'd like to appoint both those individuals. Is there any objection?
No.
They are both appointed. Next item on the agenda is an appointment to the museum board. We have a vacancy and an applicant, Ronald Leslie Fair, is, I hope I pronounced that correctly, has applied, and he seems to be very capable of keeping that position. He's currently the president, and I'd like to reappoint him. Is there any objection?
Yes, sir.
He is appointed.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Amy Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.